Some of it is messy, some of it involves injuries, but we're there for you. Whether it's false alarms or whether it's whatever. You're there all the time, you answer the calls, and you keep us safe. And I think that should be one of the starters in the discussion.
I think another, I think we have to, I think do a poorer job, and I don't mean negatively in a way. I just think you need a better PR as far as what actually you guys do. And you know, and again, I would know, and I don't think anyone else knew, and I would know unless I was elected here, that the amount of time that you're required to go to and how, you know, you have to have whatever classes and how much each individual firefighter has to put into it. Nobody knows that. They think that you show up there and you're a member. So, you know, if, I just think that there should be a sales point to this where the firemen, this is what we actually have to do. I mean, in order to become a firefighter, this is what you have to do, this is how you stay, you know, as a firefighter, and so that you can sell anything you want to sell and the need for the fire company.
And to be completely candid, that sounds great, and we could probably give you a number of people that came into the firehouse interested and then walked away.
They don't want to know the real number of 120 hours you were driving a car.
And it's not our requirement, so to speak, but to drive the fire service today.
You know, just like the police department.
People are interested, and then when they find out what's involved, and it's not us, it's what the state requires.
But just like the police. Just like the police department at our monthly meeting, you know, they give us a report of like how many traffic stops there were, you know, how many break-ins there were, how many DUIs there were. It helps us, it helps us to help you if we had that kind of information, you know, kind of on an ongoing basis. Like there were this many rescues off the mountain, there were this many traffic accidents that you assisted with, there were this many, you know, smoke incidents or whatever it is. You know, that kind of thing that gets into the public record, the public knows about it. And, you know, balancing against what it costs an individual volunteer to be a member. You know, everybody kind of knowing what you guys do will really help, I think. I think that's a really important point.
So what do you envision as your next steps?
Bring this back through the company, I would say right now, and then the company says, let's go out and get the solid numbers for the district. We will, otherwise we'll be done on the road together.
Yeah, we're usually are, back on the same path. Well, I mean, if we have those numbers, if we get that information on what it would be the first thing, then we can really take a serious look at it. If you need to come back and.
Let's have Hanigan do it.
Yeah, our lawyer has an actuary that could give a solid first year's budget based on what we do, that would, you know, based on what we, how we operate now, an actuary would be able to create our first year's budget with what is required.
And that would be the, let me call it the wish list.
No, no, that's, no, basically what how we operate now and what with what we, you know, what our actual two percent plus from this year, knowing what we need to do, that would be based on that without keeping our fund balance, which we would, you know, for the purchase of vehicles.
We also need that list of, the apron needs to be fixed.
Sure, absolutely.
What does happen, what does happen since the village, basically you're a department of the village, so what happens to your fund balance? What happens to the monies you have?
It stays with the not-for-profit 501(c)(3) corporation, which is the Cold Spring Fire Company. And we have all intentions, you know, from what we understand to not, you know, to use that money like to purchase the equipment prior to. Like we won't hold out and say, oh, wait till our district can buy the fire truck. We are on a, you know, we are on a replacement program, and we will use that money until the district becomes. And then, you know, and we've even discussed it, if, you know, if there's renovations or new firehouses, we will use that for our fund for the soft costs. So the taxpayer's not paying for couches or TV, so, you know, the fund balance will benefit the taxpayer. You know, it's not, we're not going on a cruise, you know, we have that earmarked in our minds for soft costs of an addition or a firehouse or whatever and/or equipment that we're going to buy until we become a district. Because the last thing we want to do is say, oh, it's only going to go up a little, and then, oh, we're a district now, let's buy a new truck, because we think that's extremely unfair.
That says to me that you're not going to use the fund balance, your reserve fund, to purchase a new truck.
No, no, we will. We will continue to purchase what we're purchasing prior to the new district. And then, like, you know, because we're within, you know, between now and five years of buying that new truck, and the district is not. So that vehicle will be here before the district, so we won't burden the district with that cost. The next one, it's in line, if it falls in line after the cause of the district, then we'll consider, depending on how much fund balance we have left, because we do plan on using it for the firehouse operation, whether it's soft costs for an addition or new building or, you know, equipment that we know we need to help the taxpayer buy. And we don't just plan on.
What's the timeline that you're working on?
We don't, none, we just, this is it.
But on the other side of that coin, is it realistic or probable that we could have an engineer come in with the village and have like a three to five-year plan on scheduled improvements that have to be done to the firehouse? Where, I mean, we have all these things that need addressing, we know it's not going to happen in one budget cycle, but we can say, hey, you know what, our priority right now is ventilation system. Next year, we got to fix the floor in the back room because it's caving in. And then the year after is the front pad, and so on and so forth. So at least we have a process of making headway on the current building. Because we don't foresee going anywhere, and there's repairs that we really need to get doing.
One last question, on your budget, so the new budget that we come up with, that, right now, your budget includes money that you would put into your reserve every year. That would be taken out, right? Because in future budgets, you wouldn't have that.
Right, because the district would have to create a capital expense. So our, what we call our truck fund, is for all intents and purposes, same as would be your capital expense. So the district would now born a capital expense, so that money, yes, would not.
I thought that went out to vote, like a truck would go out to the vote.
Well, like you, you're allowed to carry a fund balance. So the district would be able to carry a fund balance to lighten, to lessen the bond issue to buy that new vehicle. So, and again, that budget gets voted on, so if the people dislike the amount put away for the capital expenses, they would vote the budget down. You know, and then like North Highlands does, you know, they run their, they have their capital expense, so when it comes time for something, the bond rate, the bond that they have to bond is a lot lower because they have, you know, legally squirreled away the illegal amount of money in their fund balance.
I'm not familiar with the other districts at all, so the other districts, is that, they use that fund for capital expenses for a truck? Or did they go out for a truck for what it costs and use that for?
I, no, Garrison is brand new. I can only speak, that's what North Highlands does do that. They do.
So they have a reserve fund?
They have a reserve fund, a legal reserve fund as the village is allowed to have. You know, with the, you know, how you're allowed to keep it and how much it's allowed to be, the whole nine yards. So, and they're, you know, the comptroller keeps a very, very tight watch on the districts because of, you know, what has happened locally in the last five years.
How much is the North Highlands budget?
Public, right? It was, uh.
It was just up, yeah, I don't know.
It's public information somewhere.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, they're at.
They could tell you.
Yeah, we don't know. They're like, and they're at $250,000, but as you say, that's, that's a lot of, that's bond on, you know, the building.
We have the numbers for Garrison, but I didn't, I haven't looked at the numbers for North Highlands.
It's public, yeah.
Yeah, and we don't, I mean, we don't, we're not carrying the same, those are there, thank God.
All right, thanks for watching.
Thank you, thank you all. I'm sorry, the next topic was, oh, they.
Never mind.
Never mind.
If you need it, you need, you don't need us?
No.
Next time.
Do, but we don't.
Okay, next is authorize mayor to sign the MOU, 2019 MOU with the Cold Spring Fire Department, which they have signed already. It's the same exact formula as last year. I'll make a motion to, oh, I can't, somebody else should.
I'll make a motion to authorize Mayor Morandi to sign the memorandum of agreement between the Village of Cold Spring and the Village of Cold Spring Fire Company for 2019.
One second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone have the original, or?
No.
Michelle, we don't have time for you tonight, so if you could come back next week.
Thanks for hanging in there.
I wish, thank you for.
We're going to fall asleep now, sorry. Sorry.
Be quick.
Oh, okay.
So moving from fire to water.
Yeah, exactly. How can you fight fires with a good drinkable, clean water?
Um, and let's see, so, I know I handed out some of these last time, I don't know, hopefully people still have them. Um, what I will hand out is the application form to join the drinking water program that the state is offering to 30 municipalities. Greg Phillips actually took a first stab. We met, Steve, Greg, myself, and Karen Doyle from our office, we all met together to talk about the application. And Greg took a first stab at filling it out. Then I, I haven't sent these around yet to Greg, but I will because I wanted to discuss. There's still some open questions, which I was hoping we could both, I think it would be very quick.
Well, I have Greg's that he's filled out.
Oh, you do, you have that one, great.
Yeah, you want to just go through and read it off and?
Yeah, let's do that. Do you, do you guys want to have?
If you have a copy, if not, I have one in my office.
This is a combination of his, of his, what he filled out, and then I didn't change anything that he wrote, but I just added some stuff to some of the questions.
I didn't see that.
Is there a copy for everybody, or should we?
Yeah, I do have one for everybody, and I need to keep the one that I have my notes on.
If not, I have mine also on my.
Remember what my questions are. Anyone has one with notes on it?
Yeah, this looks like a link.
Yes, I'll swipe these, I'll swipe these.
It's got some brackets on it.
Yeah, the brackets were where I put my comments, and then I have one more. Steve, did you get one?
Not the one that you've marked up.
This is the one that I've marked up. So I guess a couple of things I'll say, as you know, 30 municipalities are going to be selected. I do think it's going to be quite competitive, but I don't, I don't think that's any reason not to apply. I know Peak School is applying, Beacon is applying, Fishkill is applying, but I think all the municipalities have different issues. So I think it's good to highlight the ways in which Cold Spring is unique. And I know you mentioned one of those last time we met, Marie, which is that you have a total surface water supply. And I don't, it's not so much the surface water supply that you have reservoirs, it's the fact that the stream runs all the way above ground.
Yes.
And is not piped into the water treatment facility. So you've got, you know, a couple of miles of stream that basically run along Lake Surprise Road and then Fishkill Road before they hit the water intake. So anything can happen to the water on the way, and especially being so close to roads. So I think pointing that out, and by the way, Peak School has exactly the same thing, for many, many more miles. Because it runs all the way from sort of northeast of Putnam Valley, all the way down to the city of Peak School. But I, you know, I think that, you know, I think one of the things that the state is trying to do here is they realize that it's really hard for small municipalities to keep running their own water supply just with the cost of, you know, treatment and all the different things that are happening and all the development that's happened now around water supplies, that they've got to help the small municipality figure out how to be self-sustainable in terms of its own water supply. Otherwise, they're going to end up with, everybody end up tapping into the New York City water supply, and they won't, you know, they won't, that is not a sustainable solution for the state. So I think they're going to, I think they're going to have to think about what is a small, you know, village with a couple of thousand people, a thousand rate players, rate payers do about its water supply. So I think it's worth, definitely worth pointing out, so this is question two on the statement of need. Greg filled out the first, the first half of the first paragraph, and he talked about the, he talked about close proximity to Fishkill Road and the three crossings, there's three crossings of Foundry Brook on Fishkill Road. But there's also two crossings on Lake Surprise, so I added those. I believe there's two crossings on Lake Surprise as well. And then, you know, dealing with different slopes and things like that on Lake Surprise Road. And then, um, and then the thing, and then I thought making sort of a statement of need. And I just listed some ideas, so the road issue, road salt, all the things that are happening on the road that's going into the water. And, you know, just being able to really identify the parcels for protection, which we've done some of already with Chasen, and that's a separate matter that we can discuss at a later date.
On the first paragraph, it's residential activities, I don't think included, but I think it's really important and maybe should be in there, is like the residents along, oh, like Surprise that don't have proper septic systems or were built before.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, that's a really good point.
And probably all the way, yeah, all the way down Lake Surprise.
Yeah, because, and then I don't know, they probably got grandfathered into proximity to the, to the water supply and things like that.
Yeah, some houses haven't been, nothing's been done there, they just have septic.
That's, that's a really good point, yeah. And the other thing I didn't know if you wanted to throw in there was just sort of, you know, thinking about the future of the water supply, because it's, I mean, Cold Spring is probably not going to grow that much in terms of population, but you have Butterfield and then maybe Marathon one day, and just whether you, you know, think about future water supply. And, and just, you know, just the general question is, how does a, how does a small village with very limited resources deal with all of this, you know, to protect it for generations to come? So, you know, I don't know what, what they'll really be looking for, but I think they're going to have to look at a diversity of different town and village situations and pick, you know, a diverse set of circumstances. So I think, I like the idea of adding the septic, I think that's important. I don't know if there's any other ideas for this. And obviously, either, you know, one, Greg or Jeff or someone will probably be the one that hits submit on this, and then we're just trying to help him out with some of the outstanding questions of what to add.
What about beavers? They're back.
Are they?
Yeah, they are.
Well, that, and that's part of having a surface water system, right? So that can add that too, beavers.
Is that, are beavers a bad thing?
Yeah, they, they stop the water flow.
They still do things and stop the water.
Yeah, that's just another, because it's, I mean, it's, you know, it's, I think a lot of bigger municipalities don't have this issue, right, where you, where you have, you've got surface water coming for so far, you know, from the reservoir to the, to the, you know, treatment facility.
I think the, certainly the Village of Nelsonville, I beli, sorry, I believe the Village of Nelsonville is evaluating the possibility of tapping into the Cold Spring sewer system. There are, I believe, portions of Nelsonville which do not have Cold Spring Village water. And there's a possibility of additional needs from Nelsonville for, for drinking water.
Right, so that also adds to the demand on supply, yeah.
As you said, Butterfield is one.
Yeah.
Marathon is another. Nelsonville is, although I've never heard it expressed, but I would think that people in Nelsonville would like access to the Village of Cold Spring water supply. I continue to be concerned about the size of Haldane's population and potential expansion. I don't know that it will, the population of, sorry, the number of students at Haldane has remained fairly constant for, I'm going to say 60 years. The population, the student population has been under 1,000 in the, 60 years at least. Manitoba, the school, the Manitoba school, I have no idea what their population is, but that probably has altered some of the students from Haldane to Manitoba. But there's, if Philistim grows, if Nelsonville continues to grow, then that could increase the demand on Haldane and increase the need for, for water.
Yeah, yeah.
So, just, I don't know that it, it deserves a place in the application.
I think just saying that there's anticipated potential growth and that we need supply. Because that, and a lot of municipalities are going to be dealing with the same issue. And one of the things that you need to think about is, should municipality be thinking now about is the new supply going to come from groundwater, do I need to start buying land? That could be a potential source of groundwater, things like that. We, we did analyze in our water study with Chasen, Jaycocks Pond, because that is another possible, but that's kind of incremental as opposed to if there's a, if there's a significant increase in.
Is Jaycocks, is the Jaycocks source year-round, or is it fall, winter, spring?
No, it is, it is year-round. It's just a very shallow source, and it, there would need to be some money spent because it enters the Foundry Brook below the water treatment facility.
Pretty close though.
It's like, it's very close, and it's like a 15% increase in capacity. So it might, you know, might deal with, you know, the developments coming online or something. It might deal with something incremental, or add a buffer in a drought year. Like we don't think about droughts because we just, we're having so much precipitation. But we, you know, once every 10 years, it'll be something, and you'll have to worry about it. So I think the adding supply here, I think, you know, is important as well.
Would the money be spent on exploring any type of, like drilling wells and stuff like that?
No, there, there's not really any money here. It's more, what happens with this program is that you, what you get is you get a consultant assigned, so the state pays for a consultant assigned to the village to help the village figure out, basically, what are the risks to the water supply? And then how does the village address those risks? So that, and then that's the nice thing about it, is I think it's the consultant, getting the consultants help, the state's behind it, and you get to be part of 30 other municipalities who get to talk to them, or how are you, you know, dealing with this, this problem?
So would the consultant be the person that would be coming up with a plan? Or is that where the engineer comes in?
No, they, they would help, and so that, this whole issue, looking at number five, question number five. So I think, you know, you, you don't, a consultant just doesn't magically show up and say, what, here, what are your problems, and let me solve them. You, you have to commit some staffing and resources to this. And so one of the examples that they give, that Greg wrote, involved, you know, they, in this, in the instructions here, they say, the staff, list the number of staff expected to participate in the program. Of course, thinking of a large municipality that's got a planner and, you know, all this stuff that we don't have in Cold Spring, they give alternatives, and it says municipal engineer, which I don't think we have, right? Local elected official, where we have that, municipal planner, we don't have that, but they do say, or planning board member, and drinking water operator, so like the water super. So I think, obviously, if you don't have a engineer, you just don't put that, right, you can't put that. And so, but that's, I mean, that's something the state has to figure out how to help municipalities with. If they don't want to end up with a statewide dependency on the New York City aqueduct, they're going to have to help municipalities figure out how they go about implementing their plans in a way that's actually doable for these small municipalities. So I guess the question there is, you know, what, what would the village, and as of right now, we don't know how big a commitment, it's going to meetings, right, it's going to some of these meetings, they're spending time with a consultant. You're obviously at, at a time or a year of transition of the water super. And so that's something, you know, to think about as well. But I think just to know, like, what, I think what, you know, you could put water superintendent, you could see if a village trustee was willing to spend time on this, if a planning board member. And also, we, honestly, we would be, as a land trust, we would be willing to commit, you know, to partner with you on this. And just to say that in the application, say, look, we're a small municipality, you know, we've got limited resources, we've got a local land trust who's willing to, you know, obviously would just be one, and you, the municipality would have to devote, you know, water super and whoever from the board or who, you know, whoever you want to appoint, but.
So water super, trustee, and partnering with a local land trust, don't you think you want?
Yeah.
Because I can't imagine Matt, getting Matt Stein or anybody else on the planning board.
Maybe Donald.
Oh, yeah, that's it, it's the problem is they're, they have jobs outside of the village.
They'll have jobs.
He's not on the planning board.
But he's sort of an engineer. No, he's an architect.
So I can tell you, yeah.
Do you think, if we paid him, come back and do some of this with us?
Nah, I want to. I think he's really busy.
Okay.
He could barely, he said he would stay involved with the DEP stuff and things like that.
Um, all right, so I think we'll go with that, and all right, I'll send that into my comments to Greg to do that.
Yeah, I still don't understand it, um, does the mayor have to fill this out, or is, like, who is it they're looking?
Well, it has to be someone, it has to be someone from the village, right? It looks like, I've never hit the submit button that's on the end, right, there's a submit button. I don't know what happens when you do that, but it would, it would, it has to be someone. It has to be someone from the village, right? So, so we can help, and it might be Greg, like Greg might be able to hit the submit button. But I'll just get you these comments, I'll send, I'll email you both these comments, and that come out of the meeting tonight, I'll clean up this. And then, and then you do with them whatever you want, and then, um.
Will you have to authorize the mayor or anything, to sign this thing, or? Because it's from the state, I don't know.
It does, the certificate, certification of applicant is coming from the mayor. So I think as long as Greg shows it to the mayor before it gets submitted, and then anyone can hit, Jeff or, you know, Greg could hit submit. But as long as you're happy with the final product.
Okay.
And then the next.
Does anyone know, or is there anyone that will actually know what type of time is involved?
Nobody, nobody really knows. A lot of times these state things happen, and it's the state saying, oh my goodness, we don't want every city and village to turn into the city of Newburgh, right? And have some major, because that, that's costing the state massive amounts of money, right, to pay for the Newburgh filtration system after everything that happened over there. So they're like, it's going to be better for us in the long run if we figure out how to help these municipalities, you know, deal with, you know, small staff to deal with their own water districts, but also how they interact with the neighboring municipalities and what's going on in their watershed. And that takes me to the next question, which is question 11. And I think, Greg, what's your?
My backup, should number seven include septic tanks?
Oh, yeah, thank you for bringing us back to that, yeah. Actually, yeah, actually I skipped a lot there. So seven, yes, septic tanks. Water, water quality and quantity issues, and so Greg had put the herbicide issue that happened along Fishkill Road. I added salt, because salt is just something that you see more and more. So many of these water crises end up coming from salt on the roads. That corrodes the pipes, and that's where, that's when you start having trouble or interact with stuff that's in the water.
And what do they use now, what's Fathom County use for their prep for storms now?
They say. I don't know, they use some kind of brine. I I don't know, they use some kind of brine, but I don't, I don't know where it comes from.
There's definitely salt on the road, you can see it.
Yeah.
The roads turn white.
I mean, that's actually the best prac- that's some of the best practices.
Brines.
The idea is that you don't have to use as much salt afterwards. If you brine that before the storm, then you don't, that's supposed to, I don't know, all the data behind it, but that's supposed to cut down the amount of salt that you use.
Now, I've seen the brining on nine D, which is state.
Yeah.
But many times Putnam County is doing, is subcontracting or whatever for the state, so, but I I I don't remember what the insignia was on the truck, whether it was on county or state.
Yeah.
So is the brining or whatever is included in the brining chemicals? Well, I don't, what is it? I mean, is that a concern since our water streams are right there? I guess that was the question. I have no idea what they actually put in.
Um.
Salt, salt.
Salt water, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, um, I mean, you're gonna end up with salt in the water anyway, so I guess what,
Right.
I guess the idea is that if you use brine before the storm, you use less salt on the roads.
Right.
And so net net, after all of the above, you're using le- less salt going into the streams.
Okay.
Um, now, that, and that take, that's a question that comes up later, which is, you know, how, are are the mun- and this is really part of what the state trying to help with and what caused, part of what caused the Newburgh crisis, which was the city of Newburgh had no control over what's going on in its watershed outside of the city. It was all outside of the city of Newburgh. It was the town of Newburgh and the town of New Windsor and that's where all the bad stuff was happening. So the state specifically asked a question in this application, does your watershed involve other municipalities? And the answer to that is yes, it's Phillips Town and Putnam County. And, you know, Phillips Town has addressed this in in their code, right, in their zoning code, they've got a whole overlay. And then Putnam County is aware that what they're doing on the roads is right by the water. How, I think the issue really though is, and I think maybe we should add this and or have this added in the application, is that issue of enforcement, how do you know, how do you know, how do you know that all of this stuff is being enforced? And it just gets back to the whole issue of having limited resources. The village itself has limited resources to go out and check that somebody's not violating Phillips Town code. Phillips Town also has limited, you know, resources. And they certainly have a process where new buildings are going up and new stuff is happening, but how do you know that someone's not dumping something into Foundry Brook or, so that that I think, that the state really has to help small municipalities figure that out, the the enforcement issue.
Right.
Um, so.
I had another question, um, regarding question seven here, um, is runoff from yard treatments of concern?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, all, any residential, or any use, any use, anything that ends up in the water supply should, you know, should
Mm-hmm.
should think about that.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, so yard, yard, uh, treatments.
You know, lawn maintenance runoff.
Yep. Lawn maintenance. Um. Uh, and then, uh, yeah, so it, just go back to question six real quickly, cause we already talked about this. The source water you plan to protect and you've got the existing water supply and then I think, you know, maybe given the discussion we had about future water supply, maybe mentioning something about Jay Cox Pond and, um, potential groundwater sources.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yet to be determined, but.
You you mentioned Peak Hill. Is Peak Hill all from, uh, do they have just reservoirs?
Yeah, so Pe- the city of Peak Hill has two reservoirs called the Wickapee Reservoir that are in the town of Putnam Valley and they're, and and they're kind of right up near the Taconic. Um, and that, and and then they feed into Peak Hill Hollow Creek. Um, so you know Peak Hill Hollow Road runs all the way along Peak Hill Hollow Creek. And then that, and that's all above ground, all the way into the intake, so there could be, there could be a lot more happening along there.
Yeah.
Um, so they they, it's kind of like the Cold Spring problem times ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's twenty miles, not two miles.
Right.
Yeah, it's pretty, there's a lot of margin for error there, yeah.
Where's their water treatment plant?
Um, I'm not sure actually. I think it's just, I think it's just as you, either just as you enter the city of Peak Hill or just slightly outside, um, but I'm not sure of the exact location, yeah.
Maybe it's by the wrong cut.
I think, I think that that Peak School Hollow Brook, it gets piped for some distance before it enters that, but for the whole length of of Putnam Valley, the town of Putnam Valley, it's all above ground, yeah. Um, yeah, so in question eleven, I think, you know, I think Phillips Town has been, um, is not a challenge, you know, it's is, you know, good to work with. It's not, nothing like the situation that city of Newburgh faced with, um, the town of Newburgh and New and New Windsor. But the question is enforcement, it's just resources, how do you have the resources to enforce all these rules? So I don't know, Greg, Steve, did Greg have any other questions, you know, when he was?
Uh, no, not really. I haven't talked to him in person since since I met him.
Since he sent, okay, alright. So I'll, I'll just send, you know, update that for the discussion tonight, send it to you and him and then I guess, you know, uh, hopefully he'll submit it or probably run it by you and then he'll he'll submit it or Steve will run it by you.
Sure. Yeah.
And what does it do, February seven?
February nine, so we've still got time, still got a few weeks.
Oh, funny.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Um, and then just one other thing I wanted to mention, um, the, uh, we we have been working on the study with Chazen, so we've got some preliminary results and we have written a report on the Cold Spring Water Supply. There's still a few more steps to to, uh, that we'd like to go through to to, um, complete the report. But one of the things is we have come up with like parcel maps of parcels that are the most important to the water supply according to the Chazen analysis. Um, and at some point, you don't have to answer me now, but I know sometimes parcel maps can be sensitive, um, to, you know, put in front of, you know, public domain, things like that, so I would just seek your guidance on how to best deliver that to the board, some of that information. Um, and, um, and then the other thing we would like to do is back, going back, it was like a decade ago, the land trust worked with the D E C S R O program and, um, and did these things called stream walks. I don't know if anyone remembers them, but they actually walked the length of Foundry Brook. They did the same thing for Clove Creek and some of the other streams like, um, Indian Brook. And they stopped and took samples of the the water and also the, but the critters that are in the water, looked at the biodiversity and things like that, just to to see what the health of the stream was like. We would love to do that in twenty nineteen under the current projects that we've been working on, um. We're, we probably wouldn't hire Chazen for that. We hired Chazen to look at the parcel analysis and what was most important for the water supply. But we might hire someone like like Hudsonia to help with that. Uh, I guess the question I have is access, right? So we might be dealing with accessing on properties, like getting access onto Foundry Brook. And I'm pretty sure where the state park, where it intersects with state parks, we could work, maybe work something out with parks. But I I don't know if you have any thoughts on how we might actually physically get access to some of those points or how we go about that.
Uh, to, uh, the point where it goes into the treatment plant?
No, there's, it's several points along, so it's, no, there's like three or four points along Foundry Brook, so you get on and.
From the upper, from the upper, upper dam and the middle dam.
Yeah, all the way down, so it's like you picks it, let's say we picked five points between the dam and the intake, between the upper dam and the intake.
Yeah. Uh-huh. Yep.
Like, I think in theory you can get in the middle of a stream and wade through it to get access.
Yeah.
It is the village's water supply, so I don't, I don't know. That's something I would like your blessing to go ahead with. And it doesn't have to be tonight, but I just wanted to, as John.
Right. Yeah, last job.
Well, isn't it, isn't it used as a trout stream? Isn't that part of the designation of the stream?
I, it is, yeah, I think it is.
Like people are allowed to fish in it.
Yeah.
I would think you.
Does mean you can walk in there.
Well, at least somewhere to fish. Trout, you know, be in the water.
But I would, I mean, I would want you guys to know because that, you know, and I think what would be, what would be really interesting coming out of that
Yeah.
is to be able to compare the data from like ten years ago to what it is today. And to be able to say, are there certain areas along the stream that we think are really potentially impacting water quality, yeah.
Well, if you identified those prior, then we could tell the people that it's on their property. Would you mind? I'm sure they're not gonna have a problem with it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I'll run it by our attorney too.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then if we do know the parcel you wanna go on, then I'll I'll be, I'd be glad to call or.
Yeah. No, that'd be great. So I know like, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, it's probably, people would walk onto private property more freely than they would today. And today you wanna do it all right with permissions, so, okay, good. Alright, great.
Nice work, Michelle.
Thanks a lot, Michelle.
Well, we'll see. I mean, I hope you guys get the, you know, become one of the thirty municipalities.
They might want someone small to.
Yeah, I hope so, yeah.
Bring a small one.
Yeah, alright.
Chief of the state.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, half week. Okay, we do have some correspondence, so just go through, oh, it's quick, quick stuff anyway. Uh, one is the usual, uh, state budget and Brexit cutting funding, uh, one is, uh, AIM, uh, funding, which which Fran knows all about. No, don't give it to me.
AIM funding is, I know very little about, it's aid and incentives for municipalities, which comes from the state. And every year we get approximately sixteen thousand five hundred dollars from the state. It goes into our general budget from what I understand and it's just, uh, we're allowed to just use it as we need, um, so now I guess the governor in his, in his new budget is proposing eliminating that funding. So that's sixteen thousand five hundred dollars from the state that we may, uh, we may not get for the next fiscal year, so.
Along with some other, right?
Along, uh, yeah, there.
Michelle came up with a big, bigger number.
There's also, um, there's also the possibility of not getting, uh, E W R money, which is, um, extreme weather, um, repairs, I believe. A part of the CHIPS money that we use when we repair roads, uh, every year we're getting about seventy three hundred dollars, I believe, of E W R money, um, and they have other years threatened to take that out of the budget, but they haven't done that yet, um. So, but they are again threatening to take that out, so if they do take out the AIM money and the CHIPS money, uh, and the E W R money, we're we're down about over twenty three thousand dollars of money that we usually get from the state that we're, uh, dependent upon at this point, so. So we need to try to convince the governor not to, to pass that law or not to sign those laws.
Have we, have we sent a letter, which I think Nikon is running a meeting?
I think Nikon, I don't know. Have you done anything or Jeff done anything?
I don't know, I think no. I'd ask Jeff.
Uh, if not, I would be, it would be, it would be twenty three thousand eight hundred dollars of a loss if the two of them, if we did not get the two of them combined, um.
Okay, yeah.
But he's only proposing the AIM one, right?
Actually proposing the E W R money also. I saw that. I did see that someplace else, yeah.
Oh, right, I didn't see that one.
Okay, so Maria will ask Jeff, I'm gonna do something on that or if he can't do it, we'll find some time. Um, next, uh, we just have a, an email from Mark Pennella, I think he's still a Commodore for the, uh, Cold Spring Boat Club and, uh, we were having, having talks on lease, um, before the project started up and completed down the boat club, uh, so he wanted to resume talks, um, Fran and I were talking about them before, so we'll hook up, we'll schedule on that. Um, next is a, uh, letter from Gordon Robertson and his wife Suzanne, um, which I will read cause it's praise of our highway department, which, you know, which is nice to hear and especially the time it took him to write this, um. Uh, all too often I am aware the village must receive various complaints after winter storms or a multitude of issues. However, rarely, I assume, do our fellow residents take the time to outline actions of the village crew when they are above and beyond the call of duty. Yesterday was one of those days and for the, and for the, our little neighborhood within the village, it was very noticeable that Mr. Robert Downey and his crew were taking both practical and preemptive care of our walks and roads. Noticeably, the Locust Ridge, Cedar Street and Main Street, uh, main areas were effectively and efficiently evaded of both snow and ice with efforts moving long into the darkness while anticipating the evening's pending freeze. Please pass on our appreciation along with that of our neighbors and I am sure both the ambulance corps and housing for the highway departments continue endeavors in this complicated and restrictive area. Best regards, Gordon and Suzanne Robertson.
Very nice.
Thank you very much for that.
That was just Rachel, yes.
It wasn't an easy one.
No.
Uh, next, approval of bills.
Okay, I move to approve batch number forty one, uh, sorry, forty nine forty five for a total of ninety four thousand five hundred and thirty one dollars and ninety three cents.
Second that. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes, uh, Justice Monthly Meeting, uh, January eighth, uh, two thousand nineteen. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
My little one's small, very minor. Thing that I noted on the time that we came out of the public hearing, I noted that it is seven forty six and not seven thirty P M. So if you want to adjust.
Can you just tell Jeff?
Oh, sure.
I think for something like that.
Not a problem, I'll tell Jeff.
Okay, with that one small correction, uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Public comment.
Oh, sorry. No, they're tired, they're gone.
Honestly, our meetings are not usually this long.
What was the night? Good night.
Good night. Thank you both, Julie and Tommy.
Oh, no, no, no comments. I'm a, I'm a new resident.
And you want to join aboard?
Welcome aboard.
We have jobs for you.
We have openings of yours, it's a really.
With you.
Well, I was happy to be here, but, um, there's so many meetings in the neighborhood, so I was like, what's going on and which one and how do I know? Is there a map that sort of shows you what everyone is doing so we know that?
Where you live?
I live on Church Street, right by the firehouse.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, take care.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We did all that.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I, no, we didn't, I think.
I interrupted a public comment.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.